All right, welcome folks. We're so happy you're here for the Thursday, July 24th Planning Commission meeting. We're gonna go ahead and get started if you don't mind. If you would, let me get you a stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for bringing us here together. We pray for your guidance as we look at doing the business of this great city of Loganville. Give us wisdom and help us to do the things that we need to do for the city itself. And we just thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a seat.
All right. Has the commission had a chance to look at the minutes from last month's meeting? Is there anything that we need to add, delete, or correct? No? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
You've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and approve, 6-0. All right. As we get started tonight, did we decide to just go ahead and leave it as is, Robbie? We're gonna leave it as is. And then we'll let the applicant come up here and speak in a minute. Tonight, this is 2, 4, 6, 8, separate cases, basically all in the same area. They're on Chandler-Hawk Road. So I'll go ahead and read in the cases that we'll be looking at tonight. Case number A-25005, Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, request annexation of property located at 4159 Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, 30052. Map and parcel C-0220011A00, Walton County, two acres, plus or minus. The second is R-25-006, again Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, filed an application to rezone two, plus or minus acres, located at 4159 Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, 30052. Map and parcel C-0220011A00, Walton County, Georgia. The property owner is Diane Atha Clay. The current zoning is A1. The requested zoning is R-44 with no proposed development. Next case is A-25-007, Eddie H. Atha and Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, request annexation of property located at 4139 Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, Georgia, 30052. Map and parcel here is C-0220011, Walton County, Georgia, two acres, plus or minus. Next case is R-25-008, Eddie H. Atha and Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, filed an application to rezone the two, plus or minus acres, located at 4139 Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, 30052. Map and parcel C-0220011, Walton County, Georgia. The property owner, Eddie H. Atha and Diane Atha Clay. The current zoning here is A1. The requested zoning is R-44 with no proposed development. Next case is A-25-009, Eddie H. Atha and Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, request annexation of the property located at Zero Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, 30052. Map and parcel here is C-0220011B00, Walton County, Georgia, 17.57, plus or minus acres. The next case would be R-25-010, Eddie H. Atha and Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, filed an application to rezone 17.57 acres, located at Zero Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, 30052. Map and parcel C-0220011B00, Walton County, Georgia. The property owner, Eddie H. Atha and Diane Atha Clay. The current zoning here is R-16 and A1. The requested zoning is RM4 for multifamily development. Next case is A-25-011, Eddie H. Atha and Regina M. Atha, CO Prater Consulting LLC, request annexation of the property located at 4109 Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, 30052. Map and parcel C-0220010, Walton County, Georgia, 4.103, plus or minus acres. The final case is R-25-012, Eddie H. Atha and Regina M. Atha, CO Prater Consulting LLC, filed an application to rezone the 4.103 acres, located at 4109 Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, 30052. Map and parcel C-0220010, Walton County, Georgia. The property owner, Eddie H. Atha and Regina M. Atha, are current owners. The current zoning here is A1 and the requested zoning is R-44 with no proposed development. Would the applicant like to come up and speak?
Can everybody hear me? Let me make sure this thing's working. I had a problem with it last time. Okay. My name is Tim Prater. I'm with Prater Consulting LLC, 19 College Street, Auburn, Georgia. I'm here on behalf of...
Hello?
I think I'm just too tall. I'm here on behalf of the Athas. We're back before you tonight with these applications. In May, at the City Council work session, they were tabled for 60 days to give us an opportunity to meet with the residents in the area. We had meetings with the residents and the consensus from the residents were, they were okay with RM4, single-family detached. That became unviable with the most recent City Council votes. That's not a zoning we would be able to do at this time. And if I could, I would like to move 009 and 010, which would be E and F, to the end of my presentation. If that would be okay with you.
Sure, thank you.
So even though we've submitted four applications, the properties are all owned by one family. All the properties with the exception of 1.42 acres is an island inside the city limits. There we go. The first property is 25-005 and 006. It's located at 4159 Chandler-Hawk Road. It's approximately two acres in size. It's currently zoned A1 by Walton County. The property has an existing house that was built in 2003 and is approximately 2,168 square feet. The property will remain as a single-family dwelling with no foreseen changes to the structure. The applicant's request, Planning Commission, recommend approval for annexation and rezone to R-22.
On the single families, we're gonna go to R-22?
Yes.
Okay.
The next property is 25-007 and 008. It's located at 4139 Chandler-Hawk Road. It's approximately two acres in size. The current zoning is A1 by Walton County. The property has an existing house that was built in 1964 and is approximately 2,002 square feet. The property will remain as a single-family dwelling with no foreseen changes to the structure. And the applicant is requesting the Planning Commission recommend approval for the annexation and rezone to R-22. The next property is 25-011 and 012. It's located at 4109 Chandler-Hawk Road. It's approximately 4.1 acres in size. It's currently zoned A1 by Walton County. The property has an existing house that was built in 1981 and is approximately 1,885 square feet. The property will remain as a single-family dwelling with no foreseen changes to the structure. And the applicant is requesting the Planning Commission recommend approval for annexation and rezone to R-22. The next property is 25-009 and 010. Location parcel numbers is CO220011B00 and CO2200110DB, Chandler-Hawk Road. The property is approximately 18.99 acres with the 1.42 acres that's in the city. It's currently zoned A1 by Walton County and R-16 by the city of Loganville. The applicant is requesting the Planning Commission recommend approval for the annexation and rezone to R-22. Although the properties, all but the 1.42 acres, is not inside the city limits, they are designated by the city's future land use map as being within the city and a residential classification. As shown on the city zoning map, the properties are island surrounded by the city limits. The property is prominently surrounded by R-16, R-22, CSO, and R-22. We have included a visual, I can't say the word, visualization of the site plan. As shown on the plan, this is not an exact proposal site plan. It's just a concept of what the subdivision may or could look like. The property owners do not have a developer for the property yet. However, the development will adhere to all zoning and development regulations within the city. With the Highway 20 Sharon Church improvement, we will not anticipate traffic from this zoning being an issue. So it's our belief, with the properties being designated by the city's comprehensive plan, future land use map, and with four properties being islands within the city limits, with three of the properties remaining as single-family dwellings, water and sewer availability per the staff report, the parcels of land meet the requirements to be annexed into the city limits, and that the rezone request for all properties are in line with the spirit and intent of the city's comprehensive plan, future land use map, and the zoning requirements for the city. We respectfully request your consideration for the recommendation of approval of all the applications as requested for a R-22 zoning. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have one.
All right. I think what we'll do is go ahead and let the citizens make any kind of comments. Then we'll come back, let you rebut, and then we'll have the commission come in with any questions, if that's all right.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the rezoning. All right, I've got the lady in front here. If you'll start, and then, sir, if you'll go next.
Our present situation has prompted many in the room to talk about the Athas. So before they have a chance to do so tonight, there are some things you all need to know. My grandparents were Herbert and Lois Atha. My grandmother was an angel on earth, and I thought my grandfather walked on water. They purchased this land in 1966, including the portion where Ivy Creek sits today. They did this to provide a better life for their children than they had experienced. Growing up in the 30s and 40s, they were both among the youngest in their large families. They knew what it was like to struggle. They were shaped by their experiences as children and became the kindest, most generous people you would ever meet. My grandmother passed away in 2011, and my grandfather in '22. Though they had saved and were able to live comfortably in retirement, by the time my grandfather passed away, there was very little cash remaining. Over the past few years, the remaining cash has been used to pay property taxes on the house and the land and to cut down dead trees. So here we are. My mother and uncle have inherited this property, a place that my grandfather was extremely proud to have owned and to have passed down to his children. They have this asset, but in a way, it has also become a burden. Property taxes are expensive, and they're both retired. The Athas aren't evil people who want to ruin the area. My mother and uncle were raised right. They are good people to their core, and they're just regular folks trying to do the best they can with my granddaddy's most prized possession. Many in this room want to close the gate behind them now that they live in Loganville. I guess it was fine when a portion of this land was developed to make Ivy Creek, though, right? We are no longer requesting a multifamily zoning, which we recognize would not be ideal for the area. An annexation and zoning of R-22 would lock the land into these zoning parameters, requiring a single-family development with the corresponding lot and home size requirements. A development of this nature would blend seamlessly with the surrounding area. However, many want to ensure that this land remains undeveloped and offer excuses about traffic and overcrowding, when in reality, they're just seeking to benefit from our undeveloped tree buffer, which is unreasonable. My family has owned this land for nearly 60 years. The city now surrounds it, and the time has come for this land to become part of the city as well. We kindly request the R-22 zoning and annexation to be approved for the 25 acres. Thank you.
If I could, before you leave, could you give your name and address, please, for the record?
Samantha Clay, 4159 Chandler-Hawk Road.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I'm Terry Parsons, 1102 Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, Georgia. Tonight, something remarkable's happened, and a lot of us in this room have a lot to be grateful for, even though some may not see it as such. But I want you to think about what's happened. When the Athas submitted this first request, it was for RM4 and townhomes, 80-something townhomes. Well, they were surprised, just like y'all were, by the turnout and the concern we all had. So they reached out to us and asked us what we thought. And then we came to an agreement about single-family detached homes, which brought the number down from 80 to 55 or possibly 60. Well, we all know that Loganville took a stand on high-density development with Twin Lakes and Tig Night, which is what we want. We want sensible growth, not human warehousing and stack impacts. So what did the Athas do? Tim reached out to me the other day, and he said, hey, we're gonna come up here and we're gonna offer R-22. All of it. We've traveled from 80 to 33. We're gonna end up with a neighborhood that will match Chandler-Hawk, Huntington Ridge. What more could we ask for? What more links could the Athas go to to be able to prepare their property for sale to a developer so that they can turn the page in their life? Or are we gonna let another developer come in here and force them to sell at raw land prices and let them go through the same process that they'll have to go to and reach the same conclusion that the city of Loganville will absorb this land at some point? And I think we all need to take advantage of this moment and look at this sensible development and the efforts the Athas have made. And I just want to thank them for it. And I hope the Planning Commission and the council will take advantage of this great opportunity that they've afforded us and their concern for our neighbors. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Is there anyone else? All right. Oh, yes, ma'am, please. And again, if you would, state your name and address.
I'm Claire Detlifson from 202 Ivy Creek Drive. And I also agree with the R-22. The only thing that bothers me is when you were reading it, you mentioned one time RM44. My question is, what does that apply to? I mean, I don't want to say I agree with everything and then some RM44 just slip right in. And I just want to understand.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate that. In the application, that's what they applied for. And then as they come before us tonight, they ask for a change from the R-44, which is, some of the properties surrounding it already have that R-44, but they're changing the whole project to the R-22. And that way, we're getting rid of any of the RM4, RM8, anything multi. It's gonna be single-family detached is what they're asking for. Is that good?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, with that, if we have someone here that would like to speak in opposition of the development, come on up. State your name and address, please.
My name is Michael Lee, and I live at 233 Chandler-Hawk. I apparently didn't get to meet with Mr. Prater. I wasn't invited to the meeting, so I didn't know about this. So the only thing I had to go on was what was posted on the signs that's required and what's posted on the website here, which is RM4 for the 17 acres. And then all of a sudden, it's changed tonight, everything to R-22, when current designations of R-44 would fit better for the properties that are already built. So I think there's just too many unanswered questions to continue with this project. I find it very weird that everything's changed on the podium, including your monitors are still showing RM4 and R-44. And y'all kind of had a look on your face when they said R-22 of a little surprise yourself. So I am really surprised. We, you know, as a neighborhood, we might support a single family going in there. And I understand you want to get the most for your money, but this whole thing has just been kind of backwards. And I'm just kind of at a loss for words right now of why all of a sudden, we're up here at R-22. It seems like a whole new project's being done. So that was what I had to say.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. With that, any rebuttal from the applicant? No? All right, thank you. Any questions from the commission? No?
Want to make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I hear you. I heard what you said about the property and the paying taxes on the property. And again, the original was, came in at RM4, whatever, R-44. I don't have a problem with you developing the property. I think it's great. I think Loganville needs to develop the property. I want to see procedure followed. And I don't feel like procedure is being followed. The original application said R-44. It was basically, we said no. It went to City Council. They gave you what, they tabled it for 60 days. I feel like procedure says a new application should have been applied for. I believe a sign has to be put out on the property with the correct, what you're looking for. And I feel like we're flying by the seat of our pants with several subdivisions in the past couple of months where the application says one thing, and then it gets to council, and everything's changed. And everybody's kind of like a deer in headlights. I just want to see procedure followed because it does set precedence for everything that's coming after. So I, you know, I would like to see the application say R-22. I would like to see a sign out there, which I believe is standard requirement for R-22, and then come back and make a decision on it. I feel like we're flying by the seat of our pants. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Kathy.
I would like the record to reflect that I've spoken with the city attorney, and he has said we have done nothing wrong. We have followed procedure. If the City Council and the Planning Commission can both approve a different zoning, it is allowed under our ordinance.
All right. Thank you, Robbie. Anything else from the commission? All right. All right. With that said, well... Do we want to... No, we're gonna go ahead and order. All right, we're gonna go ahead and vote case by case. So I'll read the first one again. A-5-005, Diane Atha Clay and CO Prater Consulting LLC, request annexation of property located at 4159 Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, 30052. Map and parcel C-0220011A00, Walton County, Georgia, two acres. Do I have a motion?
I motion that we approve this request for R-22.
All right. Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, I'm gonna ask you, if you would, raise your hand. All those opposed, like? All right, five to one pass. All right. Next case, R-25-006, Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, filed an application to rezone two acres, located at 4159 Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, 30052. Map and parcel C-0220011A00, Walton County, Georgia. The property owner is Diane Atha Clay. The current zoning, A1. The requested zoning, per our conversation... The requested zoning per our conversation tonight is gonna be R twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved that we approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Got a second, a couple of seconds, thank you. All in favor again, if I could, ask you to raise your hand? All right, and opposed? All right, five to one. All right. Next case is A twenty-five dash zero, zero, seven, Eddie H Atha and Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, request annexation property located at forty-one thirty-nine Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, three double oh, five, two. Map and parcel C zero, two, two, zero, zero, one, one, Walton County, Georgia, two acres. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, again, raise your hand? All right, and opposed? Again, five, one. Okay. Next case is R twenty-five dash zero, zero, eight, Eddie H Atha and Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, filed an application to rezone two acres located at forty-one thirty-nine Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, three double oh, five, two. Map and parcel C zero, two, two, zero, zero, one, one, Walton County, Georgia. Property owner is Eddie H Atha and Diane Atha Clay. The current zoning is A one. The requested zoning, again by conversation, is gonna be R twenty-two. Do I have a motion? Kind of motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor again, show a hand? Thank you. And those opposed? All right, five to one. All right, case A twenty-five dash zero, zero, nine, Eddie H Atha, yeah, Eddie H Atha and Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, request annexation of property located at zero Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, three double oh, five, two. Map and parcel here is C zero, two, two, zero, zero, one, one, B zero, zero, Walton County, seventeen point five, seven acres. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor again, show your hands? All right, and approve, opposed? All right, five to one. Next case is R twenty-five dash zero, one, zero, Eddie H Atha and Diane Atha Clay, CO Prater Consulting LLC, filed an application to rezone seventeen point five, seven acres located at zero Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, three double oh, five, two. Map and parcel C zero, two, two, zero, zero, one, one, B zero, zero, Walton County, Georgia. The property owner is Eddie H Atha and Diane Atha Clay. Current zoning is R sixteen and A one. The requested zoning per our conversation tonight is R twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved, make a motion when you approve.
Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor again, show your hands? And those approve, opposed? All right, five to one. All right, next case is A twenty-five dash zero, one, one, Eddie H Atha and... Am I saying Atha is an Atha? Atha, thank you. I just don't know. Eddie H Atha and Regina M Atha, CO Prater Consulting LLC, request annexation of property located at forty-one oh, nine Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, three double oh, five, two. Map and parcel C zero, two, two, zero, zero, one, zero, Walton County, Georgia, four point one oh, three acres. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor say aye, or raise a hand, please. I'm sorry. All right, and those opposed? All right, five to one. All right, our last case is R twenty-five dash zero, one, two, Eddie H Atha and Regina M Atha, CO Prater Consulting LLC, filed an application to rezone four point one oh, three acres located at forty-one oh, nine Chandler-Hawk Road, Loganville, three double oh, five, two. Map and parcel C zero, two, two, zero, zero, one, zero, Walton County, Georgia. The property owner, Eddie H Atha and Regina M Atha. The current zoning is A one. The requested zoning per our conversation tonight is R twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Again, those in favor, raise, show your hands? All right, and opposed? All right, five to one. All right. Tim, anything else tonight? I mean, Tim, hello? Robbie?
Just a reminder to everybody that this, the second public hearing for this case will be Monday, August eleventh at six thirty PM. That again, will go before the city council, and the city council will vote on the matter Thursday, August fourteenth.
All right. With that, my next question is, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Got a motion to have a... Oh, that was quick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all coming out.